Testing, testing.
I call this meeting to order on February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five at five oh four. Item one point zero one, roll call, please.
Trustee Calvin has an excuse absence. Trustee Dofflemore? Doctor Little? Trustee Lopez?
Present.
Trustee Ramos?
Present.
Doctor Curry will be here and open session.
Moving on to item two point zero one, approval of the closed session agenda. Is there a motion?
Salute.
It's been moved by Doctor Little, seconded by Trustee Lopez. Is there any discussion? Any discussion on can we have a verbal verbal vote?
Sure. Doctor Little?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna go over the order that I have on my screen. Trustee Ramos?
Aye.
Trustee Lopez or Trustee Dofflemore?
Aye.
The motion carries. Moving on to item three point zero one, request to address the board trustees concerning closed session agenda matters. Do we have any requests?
No.
Moving on to item three point zero two, content within G for the trustees' future agenda items request. Trustees, do we have any future agenda items?
I would like to just get an update on the status of the prior candidate and where we are in that process. And then also the vocational automotive program. I remember students that come and mentioned some concerns and I was wanting to update on where we are.
This item will be coming up again later on the agenda. And that concludes item three point zero two. We will now adjourn to closed sessions at five zero seven. Beginning now to open session at six zero nine, roll call, please.
Trustee Calvin has mixed these accents. Trustee Dofflemore?
Present.
Doctor Little?
Present.
Trustee Lopez?
Present.
Trustee Ramos?
Present.
And Trustee Thomas? Doctor Curry?
Here. Doctor Little, can you please leave us in a minute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the principle of liberty, of checks, and of
Moving on to item six, reported actions taken in closed session pursuant to government code session five four eight five seven point one. No reported actions. Moving on to item seven, approval of the open session agenda. Is there a motion?
Some votes.
A second. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Without any discussion, can we please have a meeting?
Yes, vote.
Moving on to item eight, request to address the board trustees on agenda and non-agenda matters. Eight point zero one, request to address the board trustees on open session, open session agenda matters. Do we have any request?
Yes.
Mr. Black. My name is Mr. Black. I'm here to speak on an update regarding the MLB Hartley Field Library. We were proud to be able to donate the fellowship amount of three thousand dollars that will support students for the upcoming, I think, twenty twenty five fall twenty twenty six school year. In addition to that, we do owe the trustee board a letter of our campaign continuing. We still seek full restoration of the library, both outside and inside. I'd like to remind the public that the naming of things remains important in this country from the utmost top level on down to us. It's a symbol of our identity, of our history, of our accomplishments as a community. And we will continue to fight for those things in addition to supporting the students, staff, and the Compton Community College School District. Thank you very much.
Benjamin Hartley Field?
I'd like to say that it's a pleasure to be here here with my wife. And she left me a card to give the forty people on the board. And I know you're going to look back here, but I'm not sure. I'm just gonna say thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, one zero two, content community college district reported trustees' future agenda items request. Doctor Little, can you just like repeat them so that Doctor Curry could?
I had mentioned about updating our candidate as well as on the harm of program.
And without any further future agenda items request, moving to item nine, where the trustees' meeting minutes, nine point zero one minutes of the January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, what are trustees' meeting? Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Is there any further discussion? Can we please have the ongoing vote?
How sad. This is the world's most expensive.
Trustee, unanimous yes vote.
Moving on to item one point zero two, minutes of February third, twenty twenty five, what are trustees' three? Is there a motion? It's it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, can we please have the ongoing vote? Moving on to item ten, reports from representatives and employee organizations. Point zero one, associated student government report, Sirin B.
Hello, R D one. My name is Sirin B. I'm the president of A H G. We have different semesters. So I was the vice president, but now I'm the president. So we're trying to build things up this semester. I'm a nursing student here, and I drive a little bit. So pretty much like. So just this month, over the winter break, we was like talking about, I just wanna watch the D C and talking to some of the board members out there to discuss some of the things that will be priority for students, such as basically financial aid, mental health, and students' support services. We also, this this last couple of weeks, we had a welcome week where we had different food trucks and we had different departments come off to support the students, or let them know about the different activities that we have on campus, and the different type of research that we have on campus. Today, some of the English student members, they added a thing called images, images. Images of Black History, where like some of the A H G members, they presented themselves as leaders. Our past history leaders like Maya Angelou, Ruby Bridges, Harriet Tubman, and they also were able to, the students were able to have the five feet like they had. Black corny cheese, fried chicken, Halloween's. Everyone claimed they loved it. I don't know if they was just saying that it'd be nice, but yeah, and then for the remainder of the month, we're going to we partner up with the Rams of Color and we collaborated at the Top of Events for the remainder of the month. And next, next, on Wednesday, we're having an Apple Center workshop, workshop where they will be able to free the bag in order to make the bag. Basically, even though it's, even though it's one of Black History, it depends on where you're from. So it's just basically wanna represent where you're from and create the bag with different ideas that the student decides to create. Basically, for the remainder of the year, A H G, we just look for you guys' support and we plan to have different events this year, hopefully bigger. We plan to be doing a carnival this year, so hopefully it gives a figure out everything out.
Moving on to item ten, point zero two, academic center report, Professor Sean Moore. Moving on to item ten point zero three, C C C F E Certified Employee Report, Dr. David Chavez Mendez.
You mean number one, not to be Dr. David Chavez, or ours, not even. Apologies for the sporty look. I'm running right back to practice after this. So let's see, recap. Last I saw y'all, we were anticipating a final proposal from the district on compensation issues. Unsurprisingly, it was nowhere near what we were hoping for, and so that was disappointing, but again, surprising, which would extend. We hope that the board continues to guide the district implications to reach some fair agreement with faculty. We hope that y'all, since it's the first time I said it this year, hopefully you're prepared well. Hopefully, none of you and yours have been affected by the fire work. We have set the district dates to meet this semester. We do not need to go over the winter unless I miss the email. We're still waiting the dates back, but I don't know. And so we look to some fruitful discussion and hopefully close this soon, possibly.
On to ten point zero four, C C C F E, the Black Report, by its place report, I'm going to go with safety. So moving on to item eleven, President's statement, Doctor Curry.
So today we have a presentation on financial aid update. We have Keith Carr, who's our director of financial aid scholarship, providing the presentation today. The presentation includes an overview of financial aid, the type of financial aid that's provided to our students, information on the amount of awards that will provide as well. An update on our work study program, our scholarship program, and also the events that are being conducted this semester and also the information regarding the capital economy that they have in that season. And so I'd like to, I'm sorry, on February fifteenth, sorry, I'll turn it over to Keith Carr.
Maybe you can, where you see the moment of the board, Esther, this is under here, and vice presidents. I need to be about to record financially, here to present on financially and some updates on this program.
Hang on, hang on. Acrobats frozen. I can do them.
Okay, starting on slide two.
Okay. Was Doctor Curry mentioned, folks?
Yes.
There's Doctor Curry mentioned. So my presentation is the overview of financial aid, direct loan program, like the financial aid, or historical trends. Work study update, scholarship update, and some of the workshops that we're going to be offering in the spring and the cash flow policy that we just have two weeks ago. And you know what is financial aid? Financial aid is assistance for educational expenses. It's provided by the federal government, the state of California, and some private organizations. There are grants, but they're payment. You never have to pay back. There are loans, all funds with their payment terms. Work study, there's working on campus around the school schedule paid by grants. And scholarships, there's merit based, and need based, and those aren't required to be repaid by the. And we have a direct loan program. There's two types of loans. There's a subsidized and a unsubsidized. Subsidized loan is where your interest is referred while you're in school. You don't have to pay that until you adopt the six units or graduate with the first bachelor's degree. That's when the interest will start accruing. And then there's the unsub loan, which is like a credit card program, which just starts accruing right away. You can add it deferred until you graduate, but then that means the interest compounds on top of the interest. So it's highly not recommended. And it's highly not recommended to take out it. So it's unsubsidized loan. And then there's some aggregate limits. So undergraduate students dependents, they can borrow up to thirty one thousand total. That's between subsidized and unsubsidized. Subsidized, like twenty three thousand. Independent undergraduate consumes fifty seven thousand five hundred. And the subsidized is twenty three, so the difference is made up in the unsubsidized. And then there's graduate professional loans that go up to one hundred thirty thousand. Now, next, I'll go to the show and talk about the trends here at Compton College since two thousand nineteen to the fall two thousand twenty four. Sorry that it's small. And as you can see, the trends over the year, it went up and down a little bit, starting in nineteen twenty. Nineteen twenty, if you guys recall, is when Compton College became a standalone college, a hundred fourteen college. And then we grew a little bit, and then we hit COVID. So our enrollment affects the financial aid disbursements and applications that we have as well. And then after we came back from COVID, there was a slow rebuilding phase, as you guys remember. People weren't quite ready to be outside again. So our enrollment was still kind of low. And then lately, it's been increasing. If you've been on campus lately, it looks like a college, it feels like a college, there's students involved in out and out. For the twenty four, twenty five, if I can make a notes, that's only for the fall semester. So we haven't dispersed strength, but first disbursement for strength. So that'll be going out to hopefully this week. So we can anticipate those numbers pretty much doubling because the fall, most of the students get the same thing for spring, so we can double it. Next is about the work study program. In order to be eligible for work study, complete the pass sub, be eligible for the Pell Grants. Take the minimum of six units and be leading the satisfactory academic progress standards. We have thirty jobs on campus, so thirty students are placed on campus in various departments like the library, art department, counseling, U F S, faculty resource, and we have some of them actually. During this work study program, they gain work experience, they get financial support, and they contribute to the student success here at Compton College. Another program that we offer here is the Compton College Scholarship Program. It's free money. Students don't have to pay back. There's one application for a majority of our scholarships. We do some, perhaps some outside scholarships, but the main one that can speak up today is the Compton College one. And for our full-time students returning, so they apply this year to be eligible for fall two thousand twenty five, spring two thousand twenty six. So if the student wins a scholarship, comes back in the fall, has to be enrolled in twelve units. We look at their enrollment after active census date at the beginning of the fall, so they're locked into units. Then we order their scholarship initially. For example, this month, the active census date is March, or the semester is March thirty. Doctor Mark, check the moment and order for a scholarship. Now we sit it by hand. So in twenty four, twenty five, so the fall semester, we disperse twenty one thousand dollars in scholarships, forty recipients. And we anticipate, assuming that the students will all come back in the spring, we'll do the same number, so do another twenty one thousand to the same board. Our twenty five, twenty six scholarship application is open, and that's on our financial aid website. You can go there and fill out one application. It's, there's a built-in algorithm that puts students in buckets. By the way, they answer the questions. And then we have a scholarship application review committee. So after that closes, they'll review the applications, write students. Then we work on the mobile app like in June. It's Monday, June third, I think it is. We're gonna have a banquet. It's a celebration for students that win the scholarship. And you guys are all up in here. So that application opens on the first, deadline is March thirty first. We have workshops every semester. For this upcoming semester, we have hand on and personal workshops, and we do some else still. So we have like a financial aid one on one. The students learn about our programs. We have assistant, so we have a fast, the dream app, the R J A. We'll give them personalized assistance. We have work study program, workshops, or we educate students of our work study programs. And if they're actually applying, they have to go to this workshop as well, so they can bring how to conduct themselves. So we have a scholarship workshop where we advise students on, look at the scholarships are available. We walk them through the application with B B. Otherwise, it's informational. But we also have the direct loan workshops. We require the student who's applying for a direct loan to go do a workshop. We partner up with a financial literacy, Mr. Eric. He educates the students on credit and not to default on loans and how important it is to maintain credit. And then last but not least, we have this fantastic cash flow college event. It was two weeks ago. We always ask or invite the local high school. I have another one to come this year. It's gonna struggle because they have their own units. They feel that they, all their students have units, basically. But we had sixty six students showing, partnering up with California Student Committee Commission in Unite L A. Our partners, Unite L A presented. So we do it in English and Spanish at the same time. It's separated and we keep them together. And then we have open labs, and there's students on the belt application. Some students just came to help the application. Some students came to help. And then we offered six five hundred dollar scholarships. There was opportunity drawing. So the students, as they get there, they sign in with the QR code, and they get the apple ticket. And then we put it in a bucket, and we drew six names. And returning students. And the food truck, the habit, habit always brings people to the party. They love that habit. And we, surprisingly, we had a DJ show. It wasn't for us. It was K Day. They just, I think they got the wrong date, but it worked out well. So not sure if this part was, it was sort of doing, but it was a nice surprise. So it had the mood going. Although it was the first Saturday, it was the first day of the semester. It happened to be more people just coming in. But I think there was one free classes that day. There was a piano class, a welding class. There was another one, but they came over after, especially we had a lot of extra food. So we were able to share food like the rest of this.
Trustees, are there any questions coming?
Yes. Yes, thank you. Congratulations on the successful event, when you unite L A out. They have a a lot of offering and sponsors as well. So with that, you said there were sixty six students. Do you, so what was that feel? This is where I'm going with this. On the climate, right, with those sixty six students, with them actually, do you know if they submitted and completed the application process? Do you have that data yet?
So we don't know.
So early.
We don't know if they received the application, because it was just the students. And so we did have, so everybody could register. We could work that out. But this year, it's, it was actually different. The vibe was nice. It was less stress. We had a lot of students in the computer lab, in the student success center. It was at one point, we couldn't let any people in and take turns. So that was a surprise as a year before, not that many people. But when we sent out the invitation, so we also provide them what to bring, what to do ahead of time. So most of the students were prepared, which was absolutely surprising.
Any challenges with the, with the dual status students with the get application?
Sure.
Okay, great. So that's kind of been resolved?
Yes.
That's good. If you could go to That's good, um uh if you could go to slide. Um but not number, the ones with the um the different years, the blue slide up there. Please with the um the year over year. Yes, thank you, that one, so just to confirm, uh was it twenty four twenty five, it's just the phone numbers?
Just the phone.
Just the phone numbers for twenty four twenty five, okay, um. Because even though the numbers are down, and again, this is just to kind of help. You know, when you come and you give us the, when you report out on the complete year, I think it it would um. Um it would help to, you know, to kind of break that up, so you can see the trends, right? From um and 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 it might give you the fall, and then I think like the next time, if you could capture. Uh say this, you know, the before and after the filing deadline, right, because they apply and then the numbers are available. I think that would help to see the trends for that particular year, so you could see. So you can capture, when are you getting the bulk of the applications versus, you know, when it kind of goes into. If it's not necessarily, um the filing period is not necessarily set up. With like the calendar year, right, because you're on this kind of, and you're with the community college, you're not with the primary deadline. You're with the deadlines for the community colleges, which fall in September. So I I think if you present that information, it would be a little bit um. It it would appear um where we're serving the community college students differently. You know, I mean, it it will show your more of a success rate, you understand what I'm saying? Okay, I think that would help, and also um. Your, the numbers, when you are doing the education to the students, are you breaking out? The different flavors of the Cal Grant, A, B, and C. Yeah. Yeah, but with the students, right?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you. You're you're explaining the different. The different Cal Grants and then the different qualifications, right, because. Okay, just because they are eligible, just because they're at the C C, they can also qualify and meet the part, the criteria for. The Cal Grant A and or B.
One application, those sorts of all three, with California Student Commission will respond and say you're eligible for A. So B is basically a freshman coming to college, A is seven, U C or Cal State, and C is for. Technical majors, you know, a certificate program already. So we educate the students, so if they're gonna try and transfer to a U C, they might wanna hold off on using their Cal Grant. The community college, because there's some other issue there, C C two G, which is a Cal Grant that you can get here. And so there is no C C two G, you have a school, it doesn't really, it could be eighty thousand. Anyway, so yes.
Yes, and then also another plug, and this will be my last comment, uh because I think this is um. Um you have two advocates up here that support this program as well, um but I would say just as a plug. Uh remember that Cal, the Cal H B C U. Yes, right, okay.
And we're partnering up with uh Mels uh. Mels uh. And helping them to work with the students as well.
Okay, yeah, so just adding that to this uh to the suite or the list of um, you know, funding programs and opportunities for. Our students that are looking to transfer, and that is again, congratulations, as always on that part. I'm sure that's all the questions that I have for. For our financial aid presentation.
Trustees, any other questions?
Questions very quickly, thank you so much for the presentation and for the event. Um two quick questions, and you can provide that later in terms of retention from semester to semester. Like a line, we're just thinking of financial aid, so how many students persist through the semester? Um obviously they gotta have some of the units, but you know, are they continuing, are they getting the money and and saying classes? Um that's basically the the data that I wanted to see if you can. And then for the scholarship program, do you have a guess at it, like who the recipients are, where here they are, any kind of information? Um I know definitely if they continue through, if we change him, he'll get an extra five hundred dollars, but I'm just going to like. So dual enrollment, like who qualifies and then who is going to sit for this? Thank you.
Okay, um thank you for the presentation, uh you know, I know I'm a little bit about financial aid. But I do have a few questions, so um when you think of loans, me being a student, when I think of loans, it may, I kind of get scared. You know, some students would probably be happy, hey, I'm getting all this money, but that's still scary up in the day. And I'm thinking of the longevity of of the student, you know, receiving that loan. So if the student was to take, you know, and I'm I'm I don't even want us to be pushing our advocate for taking our loans right now, but I know. The times that we're in, but still, I would hope that we can try and find maybe some more resources before we push that L word. For our students to be taking our loans, but um so if a student was to take out thirty thousand. And I think what the they their rate is what, three percent, you know, I I really don't know, I've never been alone, but I'm just, yes, three percent. You know, so if they was taking out a loan for thirty thousand and their their rate is three percent, how long would it take for the student to pay that back?
So the thirty thousand is something they can borrow over the next instant.
Okay.
So it's not thirty thousand a year, so they they put them on payment plans, they're stuck as well. They're being provided with that, so they're not, if they have low income at the time, they adjust that.
Okay. Okay, move on, I want to go to, so um scholarships, are they only being offered once a year or once a semester?
So the scholarships, once a year, but they hear that it's first in the fall and the spring, so if they qualify for a thousand dollars, it's five hundred.
Understood, now I did hear you speaking about the scholarships now, me being a graduate student, I have heard, you know, um some students who have graduated, they receive. The scholarship, like say, I you know, I get it this this year, but you just stated that you get it, but you have to be a returning student in order to get it. So now we have some graduates who have to return in order to receive their scholarship, what?
So we do actually have some grants for students too, so students that graduate are going to go to U C or Cal State. We have six of them, we also have uh.
No, no, I'm aware, but once they the track, but how long does that take for them to receive it?
The fall semester as well, so if they transfer in the fall, they come back and show you their proof of enrollment, then we kind of.
So they, so if they're not here anymore and they're at another, they have to come back and show you proof of enrollment of the other school in order to receive it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, because I was uh, okay, and also, thank you, I have been seeing loads of workshops, you know. Last semester, I I didn't see many, but I've been seeing loads of workshops that you guys have been setting out for the students that have helped them hands on. I just commend you, so thank you for that, I think that is all my questions. Oh, I I just told a story, I knew, I I am proud of that, um so the student completion grant, all the way gone. Oh um, yes, yes, it's all the way gone.
We're gonna have an allocation.
Will will that be a for sure thing, that it will come back, or that's still a possibility?
Oh, it will.
Okay, I just said, thank you.
In the. Jonathan, the offer for federal work students is, I mean, here in Florida, the current events that are having. On the federal level currently.
I hear that some, still I don't know, it might look kind of happening financially, but it's all bundled together, so it's a grant sort of. But anything that helps um works there is.
And then. On slide ten, um do we include the. Scholarships that we want to bring forward from the foundation?
That's fine.
So the four year also includes the foundation ones?
Yes, great. So in fact, I'm sorry, what'd you say about students' rates? To bring out the allocation, but did you ask?
When is it coming back possibly?
We're gonna have an allocation.
And I'm 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 afraid of retention rates. Uh you know, even if so, funding has dropped, you know, regardless, and this retention rate, what does that look like for next year? Would that look like for next semester, you know, they haven't even came out yet, what does that would look like for this semester, you know? So, yeah.
But I but I think that's a fair question to to ask, I I don't know. And where they stay, I I think that with a lot of, a lot of dynamics, a lot of these are happening for us to stay, but.
Yeah.
And we're trying to to navigate that, I do think they're concerned regarding retention is important. Regarding to how the students.
Yeah.
Uh accelerate the mission with focus on success and equity, everybody's saying, sorry, so I don't know. But I do think it's important for us to relate to that, but out of all the slides, can you go back to the slide for the data? I think the one program that you need, the voice you really concerned about is the federal loan programs.
Yes.
Because what's happening with the federal government right now, and looking at this reduction, those, most of those programs are fall under. Being mandatory programs, and I do have a feeling that the whole program would be cut. If we got a loan program, we don't have students for the loan program, advocate American students. And so that's why it's important to advocate federally, is that we advocate for the Pell. And then double down with Pell, so there's students that are not, who not to take out a loan.
Yes.
But was the big issue right now, students taking loans out because they're not able to get more federal aid. And um I do see the loan program being reduced, which could impact our enrollment of our students, particularly black students.
I was wanting to raise a point to that aggravation, but I want to see where, who's getting money across the board. Um and I think with the trustee vice president Lopez was asking about too, like who's being impacted? By the the cuts or increase in loans and a long time.
Yeah, no, and and it's it's gonna be there, it's gonna be for, you know, I look at the federal budget process and budget reconciliation process. There's gonna be some potential cuts as it relates to um this new administration, and how do we navigate that? And you're right, there's gonna be impacts on our students, but it would be typically impact on the student, not the loan program. And also what's gonna happen with Pell, uh there's an article in the paper today that even Pell was oversbundling. Or overspent by two billion dollars, I just saw a brief article on that today, and I haven't had a chance to to review that article. But what happens in those scenarios when there's more Pell given out, it was outdated, and I don't know. And I think we need to be able to monitor that, but you're right, already it should be segregated by um. By not just only uh ways, but also by executive, but also by faculty division, also by active programs as well. So you see who's been, who's receiving the aid, and then who could potentially be impacted if the student are receiving aid. So that's something to be aware of.
If I'm chair, may I just make one more comment, um I would, uh I would also ask, or I would like to recommend. Using the um and this is more at this uh the state level, and if there is federal. Um information there, but I would say in terms of like our students at the state level. I would um suggest using um the C S A C data. Because it can, it can break it down per segment for you, I mean for us as well. And then from there, you can further drill down to the the C C, you know, the content district. Numbers as well, because all that information is out there, like who is actually getting what?
I have that, but it doesn't break it down, specific students, it's just.
Right, but I'm just saying for that, for, you can do it for the segment, and then that way we can see the, you know, we can see the trends. Like incoming students, continuing students and transfer students, like who's getting what? And then I think from there, and if it's not possible.
We asked you that, I I think right now, today you're in the presentation from Amari, uh what regards to institutional. Uh set goals and that data, and I I do think that that's gonna be a part of my, I do my birthday after is. Regarding the financial aid, because people want to know, as this conversation is going right now, who are receiving aid? Were their majors, what's number, what's number units that they completed? Those are the questions that are asked, when your goal is focused on student completion, because you'll be wondering why students are not completing. And financial aid has an impact, so I think your questions are right with target, and you're right. We have to make sure we figure that out to be a representative data differently as based to student completion, you're absolutely correct. You know, you wanna write down.
I do, I wanna write it down.
Uh and just know, you know, the the shortfall for Pell was two point seven billion.
You said two point seven B?
Two point seven billion.
Again, when you look at the different, going back to student trustee, when you look at the different types of A, is not, don't pay it back. It gives you flexibility for use, when we get to later in our agenda about the modalities of students. It's gonna be very interesting to look at, if we have async student. Who are more eligible for that program, they're trying to, you know, making weak, some of them may be trying to work. You know, so I think it'll be really important to be anticipatory of where these hits may really, really impact. Continuation of students.
Yeah, and and the issue with with the online students too is, you know, start to look at the data of how successful students are in online program. And you you talk, and you have to find out as early to that as well, we know that students who struggle with online programs. And they say they do online because of flexibility, but are are they actually performing well in online classes, right? So they overlay the financial aid issue to that as well, I think that's gonna be a a topic of conversation. But the good thing about this is that with the one goal, with acceleration, accelerating the completion, with a focus on um equity and success. That these were all focused on student completion, and so maybe to be able to have conversation about this today. Regards to the impact that financial aid has on student achievement, and I think that's a fair question to ask. And I think that's a good conversation for the board to ask, as we try to improve competition for our students. The financial aid is a part of it.
You know, it's an item twelve on set agenda. Is there a motion to a two second. If the movement moved in second minute, uh trustee uh oh. Go one by one, are there any items, student trustee, that you have questions on, the the number?
I do apologize, my my computer having a sleeping thing or something.
Proceed up over.
Yeah, if I um. Okay, so it's a lot of numbers, so I'll just say the overall program, it's the um. Um the health, yeah, 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 the C C H, you know, the, you know, the community college healthcare, you know, with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it yeah, it's several of them, so my question with the numbers, and I was just kind of, do I have to give the numbers?
I I need your action.
Okay, so the, so the question is, because I was looking at the difference for the different individuals, right? Because the um, the the pay is different, so I, so I just wanna know if it was. Some type of. Category or something, because some are like twenty six, and I think the. The professor was like four thousand, that was the first one that.
So we we include a board letter uh regarding this matter, and so you're aware of this, so this has to do with our partnership. With the, we receive the grant uh from the K sixteen collaborative uh healthcare. And we're doing faculty collaborative collaboration regarding to working on the lineup, and so we're paying them their rate at their institution. And so we have to do a contract with those individuals separately, and that's the new one, that's the rate at their institution.
The rate at their institution?
Correct.
Okay.
And so Dr. Burger worked with their their contact at the institution and those individuals as it relates to that. Because because we're the, we're the fiscal agent for that grant.
Okay, and this um. And because it is a partnership, so this um. This funding is for our portion of this.
This, the funding we receive is for the entire, so we we submit a proposal back to the K sixteen collaborative. For our health partnership, so we are the fiscal agent as it relates to that work. And so we have, we're responsible for paying those individuals for the work that have been outlined, that that's been done. That's outlined in the proposal, that was funded, and so we don't, it's not, there's no sub award for them. So we have to be the one to set up the payments for those faculty members, we're doing this one.
Okay, okay, got it. That is, um that completes what I have, trustee.
Doctor Little?
Yes, I have a a few, some related to this program and some others, so I don't know. Yes, I have a a few, some related to this program and some others, so I don't know, you want me to just say them in order?
Uh yes, please.
Okay, um so Dr. Curry, these could be wanted for the medical, aren't they? Some people have resumes, some didn't, some had subject matter. Some didn't listen, so for these, these encompass various content disciplines.
Correct.
The faculty.
Yeah, but this. Yeah, but this is based off of the partner giving us the information for the individual day assigned to do this one. So you would like for us to get the resume statements in here too, you can do that. But it's the partner that we work with as those to be to the work that are assigned these faculty members to do that.
Right, and I'm not asking for it to justify the work, I think it'd be more for recognition, it would be good, one for representation and two, just to understand. Because again, some have a thorough resume and they show the direct correlation to physiology, for example, with one of the people. So it would just be good to kind of have the coordination and if they don't have it accordingly like that, I think would be good for us. Just in perpetuity, so we can say as we invest in healthcare broadly, because we have our nursing program, we have this, that it'll be good to have the subject matter. Um and then a couple of the other programs um like twelve point oh eight, um twelve point oh nine. These are in association with people coming um to speak uh for various reasons, correct?
Right, and it's associated with our Black and Native Color Initiative. And I would say that one of the things that I've talked to people told about is the correlation between the speakers and the number of students participating. And also as it makes the outcomes, so they have received that directive because we're having a lot of speakers who are providing presentations on campus. And now we got to be able to leave that to student outcomes. And so they have received that directive regardless of that, because I had a feeling that question would be asked.
Why? So grateful to be anticipatory, because again, for twelve point thirteen, how many people and was the follow up? For twelve point one, for all of the the healthcare, how many people? And then for um the 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 health one, the LCSW, again, the hec, the mental care, Ms. Ms. Diggs.
I think that's that's gonna work so good.
Therapy, like like food and how many and the sustainability of it, is it a one off? Or is it something that we can tie to our curriculum? Um and then for the profit, twelve point ten. We're paying for the person to procure clothing that's gonna be made available free.
So students act upon it, right?
Yeah, and there's not a student who can do this well.
That the consultant is the one who brings, who sets this up, is giving the code, it brings it in, the students be able to take, to be able to appear.
I understand.
So there's a, it's an outside consultant who do that.
Okay, it would be good if we can think about maybe an opportunity for a student to either watch, shadow a consultant, because there are a lot of first doors and things when people can do that and thirty five hundred dollars.
Well, not even there, so there there's various places who also do it for free um.
Yeah, but but also that we'd be conscious regards to insurance and insurance requirements as they says work as well. Because they've been required to provide insurance, they're gonna do this one.
Well, that's the problem.
And but that's that's the big, because we're we're not taking on the liability as it relates to stuff that get brought in, we give it away to students.
Appreciate it.
And the clarification, that's the big difference. Then twelve point three one. Gatsby not the whole one. And Dr. Thursday and John Hatcher acoustic.
Yeah, so that has to do with the um, what number is that?
Twelve thirty one.
Okay, twelve thirty one has to do with the, we're right now working on the um we have a a we have the the bid is off right now for the Good Global Funders Project. And we have moved the faculty uh out of the um the Y building on campus, and so we have to have a a soundproof room while we're going through construction. And so we need this to be done to in order for them to be utilizing for our music program. And so that's the reason why it's been brought over.
Okay, so this will be a temporary.
Yes, it's temporary, it's while we get through uh construction.
And how many years is construction?
Uh right now, I I I don't want to say how many years construction is right now, because we're out to bid, but we should know, I think the bid comes in the middle of March. And we should have a good a a good understanding where we're at. So I don't want to say what it is right now, because we don't know bid number, we don't know how that's gonna go. But you know, most projects could be eighteen to twenty one months, the bids.
Oh, this expenditure will help us to sustain the music classes, even though it's temporary. And we won't discharge that. Thank you, no more, no more questions.
Proceed. Proceed Thomas.
No.
They just have one question, twelve point eighteen. All right, with with that uh contractor, we expanding like the facilities that we're having.
No, I think just another facility. And I think you gave a list before in the past, the number of principles of education, or is this this as to our number of principles?
Without any further question, can we please have the online vote? Moving on to item thirteen, action items, thirteen point zero one revised twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five, board of trustees' goals. It's been moved by trustee Logan and seconded by Dr. Little, is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Without any further discussion, can we please have the online vote? Thirteen point zero two, board of trustees.
Make the motion, Cooper.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Without any further discussion, can we please have the online votes? Thirteen point zero three, community college district.
Yeah, so this one is a little bit, I'd like to talk to the board about this a little more regards to the resolution uh zero two two four two zero two five C. Which is regards to the board taking action as it relates to the formation of the Compton Foundation Oliver W Connor Holding. We do have our attorney here who is with Horvath, Huck. Or or Horvath, Huck and Henderson here to talk a little about the resolution before we move forward.
Yes, absolutely, I thought you were gonna ask that. Good evening, board members, thank you for having me, Madam Serina. Um as Dr. Curry said, the board is asked to consider the approval of uh forming the Compton College District Oliver W Connor Holdings. Which would be essentially a nonprofit public benefit corporation. And the purpose of forming that um would be to hold and and be able to manage the real estate uh portfolio that the district uh absorbed from the Oliver W Connor State at under separate distinct and independent entities that would be tasked with providing the support and management and giving that the ultimate attention. As well as in ensuring that of course, to the extent that the heirs of uh Oliver W Connor pursuant to the settlement agreement that was ratified by the board and negotiated back in twenty nineteen, that the scholarships that are part and parcel of that um continue to uh be uh honored uh through the Oliver Oliver W Connor College program. And that of course, the um revenue that's generated from the real estate holdings that transition properly to the scholarship programs.
But yeah, are there any questions, proceeds?
I'm. Administration will ensure this this structure will ensure that we are doing transparent, you know, business that will protect.
Absolutely, and you all have a very, very good precedent for how this should be structured, because you have the Compton College District Foundation that is similarly structured as a nonprofit benefit corporation. And so of course, that requires uh filing articles of incorporation and number of required items in order to form the entity. And then of course, working hand in hand with the district administration, we would ensure that that's all being done in a very transparent fashion and reporting back of course to the trustees and.
Just a, just a, we're fine there, Chair. So with this um, so we would have it, because now this is gonna be separate. Is there like another governing body of board that comes in and reports updates and statuses to the board, how does that work?
So yeah, my thoughts is that as a part of this, I mean, this board will be the governing board or the holding company.
Okay.
And so we'll be coming back to the board with the next steps of how we move forward with this. And so there's other community, there's another community college that's very familiar that does this as well, because the partner board is in there, we're in the board. The holding, the auxiliary will be able, you'd be able to take action on items associated with it. But the governing board, from my perspective, this governing board will be the governing board of the board.
Got it.
Of the holding, um I don't say holding company, but the holding corporation.
Thank you. No further questions, Chair?
And and one of the things that we're working on as a follow up to the question in terms of with our insurance company is regards to insurance and liability and that mixture of the insurance thing, who did this history, that we have to separate insurance for the holding company. This is a good thing for the district, I think this gives district opportunities in regards to real estate uh with the current properties, but also future properties as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Yeah, oh, it's still to be known.
Wanna make the motion?
Second.
Are there any further questions, discussion with the board? Can we please have the online vote?
Yes.
Thirteen point zero four, administrative services, Compton, CCG, resolution number zero two dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five D dash budget transfers, augmentations for this year twenty twenty four through twenty twenty five, is there a motion?
Some.
It's been moved and seconded, is the, is there any discussion? Without any further discussion, can we please have the online vote?
Yes.
Thirteen point zero five, facilities planning and development contracts over one hundred fourteen thousand eight hundred. Amendment Compton Community College District Resolution Number zero two dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five D. Higher Services LLC turf and zone of the football field, is there a motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, is there any discussion?
Discussion. Is there any way we could just keep the turf that we have, maybe use some of that that money to go towards funding like?
So the problem is that the the is is bound to us to utilize all of our that service associations.
Oh, man.
This one of the projects, so here's the issue regards this, so when the mascot name changed, we have to move the tar in front of the field. However, if we move the end zone, one area with a tar, then the other area uh then the other area does not, is not consistent. And so we want to make sure that it all looks the same as it relates to the to the stadium, and that's the reason why there's a minute. The board approved the original contract, but when we saw what the new one would look like, it's gonna be newer versus the other end zone, we figured that we wanted to ensure that they both look the same. And that's why those are increased.
Well, we need to make sure we're broadcasting them games for everyone to go and support that that turf hang really good.
But also to give the local high school students, uh we had Compton High School and Long Beach Jordan High School who have the facility and next, and also Compton Early College. And then next year we have Long Beach, Jordan and Compton Early College, we have to roll with our football team. And so I just think that this, the mixture that looks right for the next season is important, but also the mascot name change was the the reason behind all this.
I do have a quick question, I pray I know with those um emotional fixtures or something that that can help to bring would you bring people to the point of which you set these up schools and use it, do you like it? Do you have presence in any of those names like I mentioned or it can't pop up for people who are interested in applying or something?
I know that's a stretch.
No, it's not, actually, that's that's uh ruining and facilities usage, that's one of their things that they have to continue to push is when the football game is especially nice to make sure that we have a table for our protected. And so they, that's something they're always pushing for, to make sure that we do that. Does it make sense? You have the population right there, first to that.
Thank you, Ruby James.
Right.
Without any further discussion, can we please have the online vote?
Left for you, Ms. Yes, but.
Moving on to item three point zero six, facilities planning and development contracts over one hundred fourteen eight hundred thousand. Amendment, necessary office environment for administration building, is there a motion?
Hold on, second.
So this, this is just an extra, so as we, we have moved into the administration building some of us, and we're trying to get the uh boardroom and uh my office completed, the issue about lobby and chair and seating in the lobby area, and that's where the extra uh project is coming in to make sure that lobby air right outside the board. And so that took a little bit of time to figure out what we want to do next first.
And this was the least expensive uh proposal for lobby?
I don't know the least expensive, I can't say that, but it's the the current bidding that we've been using to close out this project, and so that's why we're particularly this bidder. We already had a naked person there. But it looks nice, we just gotta get the the last piece of furniture and also the blinds as well, and that, to be able to let's put a board.
Is there any that, any further discussion from the board? Can we please have the online vote? Now moving on to item fourteen, discussion, action, fourteen point zero one, Compton C C B, revenue number zero four dash twenty four dash twenty twenty five F. Resolution of the board of trustees of the Compton Community College District, authorizing the development of procedures to support community college students who leave the country due deportation related circumstances, is there a difference?
There, this is not for vote today, uh what what I would do is just introduce this reservation and what we're working on regards to uh intervention on our campus and testing for students or student families who have been deported or they are being, are being for the actually, it's not in the country. And so we're trying to find ways to support those students to be able to complete their degree, and in some cases we might not be able to support them, given the programming not offered fully online. This gives our students and uh the flexibility, especially if they're eighty five, forty students, the opportunity to complete your degree. And so we're still working through this and we're working with some other colleges to build a consortium around this uh resolution. So right now, Cerritos College and Compton College have been in conversation to work together on this, to put it this out. And so we want to come back to the next month meeting for the four tracks and and then be working with Cerritos and other colleges in part of the sourcing. And then be working with Cerritos and other colleges in part of the consortium regardless of procedures. And in my understanding, this potential legislation that being put in as well as Sacramento, to be able to do this as well statewide. But the good part about it is we're, we're learning how to be able to do this and support our students if they are deported or someone in their family deported. Or they're not leave because of fear of portion, you may have deported, we have the opportunity to be able to complete their degree. And the key for us, when I look at this policy, is making sure that we do not plan proportionate. So then you might not, we won't have any issue with the state regardless there.
Yes, uh, and this is just, um, um, thank you, Dr. Perry, for, um. Putting this. Uh, before us, for us to kind of, for us to consider some options for the students. So just, um, thinking outside of the box here. So if we are, let's just say if, for whatever reason, if we are unable to. Or if this, um, if the student. Wants to do like a pause. Is it a possibility that, um, there can be? Like a hold or a pause. Based on that particular student's educational path. Right? So it's not like there's, you know, like you have, you know, like the class being dropped. You know, if the student can, um. Very similar to when we have like a, like a withdrawal, right?
But, I mean, you do like a scoop, excuse me, bro.
Yes, like a, something, something along those lines. And maybe tied like that, you know, depending on the circumstances. You can, you know, that pause, and I'm just calling it a pause. Can be implemented for that particular student depending on the circumstances. For a time period until whatever. Negotiations or legalities, I guess, are, um, resolved. And that student can either come back in person. Or say six months, one or two semesters down the line. Now the consortium of colleges have implemented a program, say for students to do some type of continuation online. So I'm thinking immediately, let's just say we don't have anything in place. Could we protect the student's career path by putting some type of pause in place? For us to, one, develop an online program or until whatever deportation legalities. Are resolved and then that student can physically come back. And this is just, I'm just.
Yeah, I, I don't see, I don't know if people might think about programs that you might not be able to offer for your mind is like, look, right?
Yeah.
Because of the hands-on, that's not possible, right? So, but I definitely, that students are able, that students are able to get an incomplete. Uh, which, I don't know what you can do for.
For, we, uh, one semester.
Yeah, so that, as soon as our, let's say they're in a situation, they get incomplete, they're finished the work. To be able to complete that semester. So if you're looking at a pause and for that one, of course, that'd be potentially doing incomplete. But so I think that's something that we couldn't look at and also just use withdrawal, and we look at this whole process.
Yeah.
But for our, from my perspective, when we look at Compton twenty thirty five. And again, we want to focus on student completion with a, with a focus on equity and success. We're going to have students who are in this situation, or that not be able to complete. So we have to be able to offer an alternative for those students. I think this resolution is a start, but the key is going to be making sure that the procedures, of what the process looks like. We, we, we could actually do it, right?
Yes.
And so that's some, but it's good to work with other colleges to figure this out.
Right, and I'm, going back to like the withdrawal or the incomplete. I'm thinking along the lines because this is unprecedented. So I don't think a student should have, you know, what I'm proposing is creating something. That we don't currently have on the books, not a stu-, not a withdrawal, not an incomplete, because this is an extenuating. An, an extenuating circumstances that is at no, it, it's, it's almost like a disaster. That's what I'm thinking about. It's not like it is a disaster, it's, it's a disaster.
Yeah, but I, but I think that we have to work through this policy to try to figure out what to do. And I, and I wouldn't say, from my perspective, it's on my own personal statement on this. Is that we have to figure out how to navigate the new politics.
Yeah.
That are happening in regards to innovation. And really understanding what that means, but also the potential impact of our students. But I don't think we're going to be able to create a new, uh. Code or reasoning in regards to what happened with these students. I think we have to figure out, based on our current policy.
Okay.
What's the best way to address it? And it's going to be the individual as well, right? There's going to be a lot of people involved that aren't on the register records. It's going to be counseling, there'll also be some of the academic programs also trying to figure this out. And I do think it's going to be, some of it's going to be case by case, as we try to work with these students, but we just don't know. We're offering students that opportunity if they have to leave the country, the opportunity to be able to complete their year. And was that the? And we got to figure it out. So I don't have all the answers tonight.
Yeah.
But I think this is a good path for us and our goal is to bring this back next month for approval, but also more information. But the key is going to be the procedures. And I will tell you that it's going to be some cases that come in front of us, even when we have procedures, we're going to be thinking like, oh, how do we address that? And so we have to be open-minded in this conversation, the opportunities completely. Dr. Perry, you want to add something?
I was just going to say that in E W or extending many circumstances, any student competition for that. Under the regulation. I don't know how that applies within, this is just a general comment.
And we already had that as well.
Can I ask a question about the E W or even the, uh, incomplete? Does that put you at a, a sap when you come back to school? Will you be?
In E W, I don't think so.
What about a, uh, incomplete?
I think, I think completely, you have, you have a full semester to complete. And then you get a grade based on that. If you don't get your grade, they can start first place to default grade. Usually it's a D or an M, and then we go to that and then you get that.
To sap, that's, that's, and then you have to do, then with the sap, and you're basically taking your class either. For free and in order for you to pay it back, or you're trying to play catch up, so then that puts you. Yeah. Head months. But, um. That's, sorry, that was just that. Cause I knew that once you did that, that that makes you an sap. You can please withdraw, like you become a sap until you're, you're in turf. But, um, yeah, so I, I had a question on that. I'm sorry, I'm just. So yes, my question on that is, um, do we have Perko here on campus?
Yes.
Awesome sauce. Um, are we able to use our attorneys to help some of our undocumented students?
So I think that's a separate from this item, uh, but we do have, we're providing legal assistance to our students. And they're on campus, uh, provide that. And if we have utilized our attorney to provide training for faculty staff as based to integration in force capacity.
Have any, um, further questions about your areas?
Forty point zero two, uh, at the last board meeting and prior to that, we talked about the issues to say go for the college. For twenty twenty through twenty twenty before. And I'm already working on a dashboard regarding to the data we've been able to decide in the data. And so I would provide the opportunity to share what we've been working on.
That link, the last link in the background.
This one?
And then. Are you able to?
This first one, or the C O?
I don't know.
I'd have to open up my email in front of everybody. Which?
The follow point twenty four, is what you want us to do?
No.
Oh, I, I just, I wanted to talk a little bit about background. How, that what this is for, instead of actually showing the dashboard that we're doing. Developing. In a second.
Up and blocks. How do I get?
Sticking to those tail. Board of Trustees. Um, just as, as I've already mentioned, one of the things that we discussed at last board meeting was, um, the part of the Compton twenty thirty five plan. Was evolving. How we present our institutional set goals. So just as a, um, just a recap, this is from our fall twenty twenty four update. Which is, if we look at all twenty institutional set goals. And the disaggregation by age, gender and ethnicity. This report, which is how we've been presenting our goals for the past several years, is about fourteen pages. So as a part of the Compton twenty thirty five, it was patient plan. Um, a lot of the discussion has been how do we make our, our data more digestible, reusable, especially by our program services? And so as a part of that, um, what we've been working on since last fall is mapping out, how to take. This, you know, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen big document. And expand that, um, by disaggregating this data by our program service. So Heather, if you could go to. So, um. This is the work that we begun last fall that will continue through the spring, which is presenting, and I can tell you on this page alone, are. One, two, three, four. Five, six, seven, eight of our twenty institutional set goals. Right? So we've been able to transform that static data into a dashboard. Where we're disaggregating our success rate, retention rate, average units completed. Number of students completing nine or more C T V units in a year. Um, success rate by distance education, course status, uh, students' part-time or full-time status. All of that is contained within this dashboard. Wanted to walk you through an update on how we've been developing this, not so much to go through the goal themselves, because. That crunching of that work and those numbers will take us through spring as a part of our twenty thirty five of new patient. And setting our next long-term institutional set goals, so the ten-year goals. Uh, where we'll be hoped to be in twenty thirty five with these measures. But I wanted to come and give you an update on the work that has been done to develop this dashboard. And then just sort of discuss with you, particularly about around the discussion you had earlier around financial aid and the data that. Um, we also need to see to measure how our students are progressing. Um, as we continue to build out this dashboard, data that would be useful to see, so that we can take that information. That for our planning team and, and our I D office and work out how to refine this even more, because the goal here against to take. All of the data that we need to make effective planning decisions, but make sure it's presented when it's not overwhelming for the. And so, um. That's a little bit of background, just to connect, you know, um, last year's discussion to today's discussion. And, um, I just wanted to kind of walk you through the idea of what you see on the screen. So. Again, in the middle are some of the core, what I call course measures. So we've, again, we have twenty institutional set goals and they're around things like. Entry, um, you know, course completion, uh, progress, and then, you know, completion outcomes. So we can consider this the family of course completion measures, so success rate, retention rate, C T units, average units. Um, and we can disaggregate those by, you know, our equity categories, age, gender, ethnicity. And all of the visuals with updates. Uh, you could slice and dice and get very fine. We do have some, um. You know, some rules of thumb that we follow in I D interview, not, you know, cutting data too far, we don't want to identify students. But, um, all of these are interactive. So if we needed to drill down, say, for example. Male African-American students, um. Uh, let's say who are between twenty and twenty four. Right, soldier? This is, this is, oh, oh, yes, yes. You could, you could take a picture, this, this is the public league.
Did it refresh?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, um. Just to give you an example about, you know, how these visuals move as we disaggregate there. Now, there's, there's some fine tuning and things that we need to do. Um, but, you know, let's say you wanted to drill down further, you can, uh, Heather, you can.
So she goes over the red button for twenty three, twenty four, or either, yeah.
Right.
There is the number, okay.
So it'll give you that rate, it will give you that unduplicated headcount of the number of students specifically. Um, that, you know, that rate is for, so.
Do you define me somewhere like, so success rate means?
We do.
Success rate means?
So that's sort of, the priority has been to do it on the dashboards, but if you go, uh.
You don't have to leave off of that, I was just last.
No, no, I know, but I do want to show you, um, that second to last tab again, Heather, is. The last pages if you scroll down. Yeah, so prior, the college had already defined with each of the, the goals are. Mm-hmm.
But it's, it's a version, you know.
Well, we will take these and present them in the dashboard as well, so that, so that. Just wanted to, for you, I wanted to know that, um, how we define each of the soon said goal of the status. Um, and then the bottom role, um, again, is we continue to make sure that the data is accessible to programs and services. Um, is, is being able to disaggregate these same measures by students toward going in, you know, our support programs. And there are a lot, that's part of the discussion that we'll continue to have to court planning of. Which do we need to highlight, right? And so, um, these were chosen because they are a part of, of some of our existing dashboards, like our. Student services dashboard and general course and retention. But the plan for, you know, the remainder of spring is to identify as many of our support programs, um, that we can, so, um. You know, athletics, uh, you know, students who are members of, of our fist. Um, our fist program, um, Black Female Success Initiative. Uh, C C B, Ellen Olympic Bowl, C C B to fail, et cetera. So what we'll be doing through the I D office support planning is continuing to refine this in a way, so it's, we don't want to repeat the old. Static reports and have it be overwhelming, but we do want to make sure that programs have access to their data. Um, and so we'll, we'll continue to work off with this model, but work out a way that is visually pleasing. That, that your question about the definitions, uh, so that we make sure that it's as self-service as possible. Right? So that both can easily go and say, I need to know, you know, how many health, health, those students, what have been a success rate over the past five years? Um, are they also, are those students, what's their cost of participation in the O P S A or next step, something? So that's the plan for the rest of spring is to identify, um, the rest of our program services to place here. As well as continue with the rest of the, um, the grouping of the institution that goes, so. You know, our transfer rates, the number of students, our C T students who are employed in their field, studying two years out. Um, you know, the percentage of students who apply, enroll in college, all of those. Questions or discussion? Uh, so what we do have is from the act of patient. And from, um, both for enrollment and from financial aid, students housing security status. So that is information that and things like, uh, screens for generation status. Are some of the kind of topics that we'd be discussing core planning about, if and how we can incorporate that type of special population.
And that was difficult, you can have a million of them, so, uh, I was asking for a couple of reasons. One, because of our great commitment to housing. And wanting to look at some point at the difference it does in a academic group for housing security, and so I'm just wondering if we are. You know, having a benchmark for somebody to compare it to once we actually have our housing. Um, and then also when we. You know, look at this data, is it? you know, look at this data, is it coordinated, and maybe this is for you, Dr. Curry, with different departments? So like, does counseling get an aggregation of five indicators to say, we are planning meeting? Here is a core constituency that we either need to be intentional about outreach, or, you know what I'm saying? So if there's an academic department, like, is there a piece of the campus that faculty, you know, sit down and strategically think about? You know, here are the retention or persistent rates in these core courses and the integrated indicators around that. So, I mean, not to answer that tonight in one question.
No, that, but that's where we're headed as an organization, that to look at the goal for the college with the one goal, and now they will look at student completion. Now you can start having conversations within departments about the data. And they just started, they just started drilling down to see what's happening up to it. And I think this is why this dashboard is so important for us, because it's important that we take the data as part of our achieving dream work to the practitioners, be able to find solutions for why certain student population are not completing. But we need to be able to have the data that's publicly available, where people are able to drill down and see what's happening. And that's us, to me, that's what's important. So yes, so one of the things for 2035 is over the different departments to ensure that this is a part of conversation every single month that you have within your department. And talk about your data. And so I, I give a good example. We look at EOPS care, right? We, we talk about transatlantic, do you have a dashboard for the EOPs? To me?
I don't, I'm transferring with that, yeah.
Okay, but if you look at one of the ones is transatlantic EOPs and to be able to look at that and segregate by program. For that means, you know, PS, you have the conversations about, okay, why are students are not completing transatlantic EOPs? And what's that look like? So when counselors are dealing with those students, they can start talking about that, transatlantic EOPs. But now they have the data for their goal. My concern when you start to look at 2035 and the work that's being done, we have the work that's being done pushed back off to on the institution and say, this will be our goal, will improve completion, but then certain programs are not having these conversations about their students. And that's where, from my perspective, the magic happens. Say you're in special research center. They didn't have the conversation about why students are not completing transatlantic EOPs with their math or getting their own. And was that? And we all know the students are waiting till their last semester to take their math tests. And that to me is problematic.
And to have a correlation between their certified classes, which we quite drop in and not passing. There needs to be some accountability there and some student input there. And, and voice and agency that three or four or five years later, because it's letting me out from that. So I think that's very imperative. Also, from a, this is very innovative compared to many institutions who don't even have, not only don't they have the data, but they don't publish it. And so, but to me, it's also an example of how we can do this work without this data. If really we care about student completion. So I do want us to be thoughtful of the ways in which we recognize that Compton College is not only a model, but a leader in this work. And we're not doing it for that recognition, but I think we need to also not recognize that, because I really don't know how you make decisions, fiscal, curricular, hiring, campus, without understanding the landscape. So leadership matters. Thank you for that.
Proceeds are there any other questions or comment?
Just to add to, so one is we continue to build this out and then we're working on our institutional set goals for through 2035. And then that's going to be done, hopefully, back to the board by, not hopefully, we're going to bring back the board this year. And that's what we're going to follow for the next ten years. And we be able to do, but this is where we started, this is where we're at each year. I think it's good for our reputation. We need to focus on, uh, the issue.
Next.
Thank you, thank you so much.
The next item we have is a bit of enrollment at Compton College. And I didn't think of the enrollment numbers today, but I will, I can, but yeah. But actually, we're doing fairly well regardless of enrollment at Compton College. Well, I saw a big, I saw an increase that happened in the last couple of days regards to our enrollment. So right now, as of today, our enrollment is up compared to last year at this time, we're up by fourteen percent. So we have fifteen seventy-three is our full-time equivalent to the MTS. But what's really interesting for us is our, our fill rate is about sixty-nine percent compared to fifty-four percent two years ago, it's sixty-two percent last year. So we're doing very well. The key is to continue with that trend. Our goal was to get to near the numbers in spring of twenty twenty, uh, spring of twenty twenty. We're not going to make that, but for the last one, two, or five semesters, we're higher than that. So we're not that in spring. But we're doing very well. So we look at the data that's in your packet for days. I just want to just draw your attention to the number of classes that are, the way the course offered are being handled at our campus, which the board has asked for, for to spread the modality. Look at the percentage of in-person classes that are being offered, including the high school. So sixty-three percent of our courses.
Where?
There's.
Can you? Okay.
Sixty-two percent of our courses, sixty-three percent of our courses that are being offered are in-person. And the fill rate for in-person classes is sixty-five percent. The A-separated classes, which is the online classes, is thirty percent of our enrollment, and their fill rate is eighty-seven percent. But if you look at the high school classes, high school classes, the enrollment adds thirty-seven percent. And so the board asked for us to, we can this at all times, but you can see that on campus, we're getting more students to get classes in person. And the reason why I think more people want to be on campus is because they have the resources. And so as a representative of the board, the class will put resources. That's one of the reasons why students are not on campus. If you look lower down, we have the table with the board dashboard, regards to our tech teams and what are happening. You can see the data, we're going to start doing well there. And especially sort of out in the field and what's going on with them. See also the number of workshops that are being offered. And then the students are participating. And then you also have Welcome Center, Nina. This is pretty interesting too, for the much, generally you receive who's coming with assistance at the Welcome Center. And this, this is not, this is not unduplicated. But it's, so this is a huge thing to be looking at. But you see where people are coming in more. We have students who are just coming in to get help with just the rest of the classes. And if you look at our enrollment decline, as I said before, achieving that to not be an open. Students in our community, they need to be able to see someone, you know, to see, get those resources and get the support. So you see the number of people getting the support. And then we also provide information on the different plans we have, for retention and persistence. The key is to make sure things are, they will agree, to read their courses, and also our content. So I think we're doing very well, but at the end of the day, it's still to do that. And that's.
With, with a hybrid like that. Doctor.
So. The classes are being opened because they are moving the threshold of the average class size for us to keep it. And also some of these classes are classes that are needed to complete programs. And so that's where we are. So the fill rate can be a little bit also deceptive. For example, our A-separated classes have a class number thirty students, where in-person class have a class name of a forty. So if I have thirty students in class, that was a hundred and thirty, I have a hundred percent fill rate of thirty students in a class that has forty. I'm serving the same students, generating some, yes, and now that class has a fill rate of seventy-five percent. The fill rates are a little bit deceiving, and what we look at on a given basis is the class, what's needed for a complete student program.
I just have one quick question. So are there courses, though, that are low-filling has a low fill rate after you do that kind of formula across? And, and, and if so, what are we doing in the gap?
So it depends on the areas. And we struggled with this a lot coming out of the pandemic in the CTV areas, and now we're seeing with the down there. We're seeing some struggles still in some of our hard sciences, our STEM calculus-based STEM majors. And we are working with the faculty to, to see the way to make improvements to do garner our increased fill rates and access to those seven majors.
And we also recognize that some of these curriculum courses is because of the nature of industry and how people are moving into different areas. You know, are we looking at that too in terms of, you know, calculus being contested a lot right now, not its usability and application? And if it's a singling out to kind of restrict certain people, we, some might be that. But I'm just wondering, are there other courses like that that only may stop to see this lower fill rate?
No, we've actually, this is, all, all of these fill rates are increases over prior times.
I'm talking about those two classes that we're stuck, we're seeing increases in those classes too. They're just not at the same pace, but they're going, they're in the right direction.
So as you see, you have the board policies and regulations, every block for, for the first year for the district. Again, we continue to follow our schedule, which is a part of sixteen point zero one, as raised to our board policies and those are evolution. As well, is there any pressure for board members?
I have a question on sixteen point zero two, plan of their membership. Are you implementing something like that? Like, let's say one of the local school board members does, you say, you know.
So that's, that's something we have to work with the county, because they ask for our board policies as it relates to elections. And they also ask for regulations regards to when you call to a call protection. And so this was a change that was, that was included as part of policy changes by CCLC. And so we took the language from there and it's the policy.
Trustees, are there any other questions? On item sixteen? Moving on to item seventeen.
Just want to, these are some of the updates that we have. I think it's important to see, item seventeen point zero three, which includes the enrollment management and what was funded, seven thousand dollars worth of projects that are funded for enrollment. That includes that, that extension begun by twenty thirty, but also that, the fall, that's a very dear evaluation for those activities. You also have item seventeen point zero six, which is an update on the budget and the budget development process. And that's something that got the national, for the board's review, to know where we're at. Also, I think it's important just for the board to note, item seventeen point, seventeen point one two, which is your balances as it relates to our other post support benefit, other involvement with the trust. And also to our purchase stabilization trust. What's interesting about that, you open the second task with Heather? Just to give you a sense of what the valuation of that. So right now, in our OPEP trust, it's about fifteen point zero two four. And then also in our purists, there is about four point eight. And so we continue to monitor that, but this one was different from previous one, includes the withdrawal amount that we have. And so when you look at the market, I do it well, and we continue to move forward and utilizing the funds, especially for, uh, all the post point benefit, the paid, utilizing payers, you know, it also help with our purists. And so we started the funds in, I think it was two thousand and sixteen for the purists in the two thousand and thirteen OPEP trust. And so once you think to the board trustees, we're allowing to do this, and it's going to help us through the next couple of years, that's what it is to the fiscal certain, for state California. Item seventeen point one five has our five-year fiscal pension plan, which was shared with the planning and budget committee. It was also shared today with the council.
We didn't discuss.
Okay, okay, so it will be shared with the council next week to be able to talk about that, but it's our five-year fiscal pension plan for the district. And we're monitoring that, but it's not including out of the economy of the negotiation.
I take that back, you need share.
You need share, okay. Okay.
You need share with the managers.
But it was shared today with the consultant. Item seventeen point one, seventeen point one seven is an update of our facilities bond program, the master schedule. We have that seventeen point one eight is a schedule for student housing. Every week I get a picture of what's happening with the student housing project. It's going well. And their, their right old budget, which is the most important part of anything for me right now. But we are, we had a call yesterday with the committee regards to the loan, which was an issue or a concern that came to the main baseball activity. And so waiting for the Department of Finance to be back to us regards to the loan program that they're working on. But that's the one thing that's outstanding, we're monitoring the project as we move forward, and it's going very well from my perspective. You also have seventeen point two one, which is less than updated, and track bills for the district. And they were also doing, including for the bar oversight committee, and then we also had the board trustees follow-up law for the district. And that includes information on the rest of the press that are concerned in what.
Moving on to item eighteen, future agenda items, eighteen point zero one. Content to the college district board of trustees, future agenda items request. Are there any more questions?
No future.
Moving on to eighteen. Hold on, these are just the list of what's coming.
Yes, great.
Moving on to item nineteen for reports, Dr. Curry.
Okay, I have a couple items to, but so today, someone asked me if they felt dressed nice today. Uh, today I my student trustee, excuse me, I will rest here. Today I was in Sacramento for the, uh, also a hero award, and I was awarded a sub zero sixty point zero. Nice, this is my first time walking on the city floor, that's pretty nice, glad to rush out to get to my flight. I was nervous about making my flight. And I made it with some time spare. So I will say thank you, congratulations to, at the, at the media shoot. I said thank you to the board trustees, and also back expand, and we trust you for the support, for what we're doing at Compton Powers. So that's why I'm, I'm dressed fancy. I also wanted to, we have a P D health forum that's scheduled for March seventh, twenty twenty-five, twelve, twenty thirty at Cal State University, we send out the flyers to board trustees and anyone who's been going, but that event is happening on March seventh. And we also have a meeting this Saturday, which we sent out to the board today, so everyone has that, is the, we have our job period. Was a yearly job period that we have in partnership with the city of Compton, and also accompanied by a student string. But our community associate department takes the needle this activity. It's from ten a.m. to two p.m. in the archity. So if you know, anyone that's looking for employment opportunities in higher education, this event will be happening this Saturday from ten a.m. to two a.m. And the next thing I wanted, we have a couple of new people that are, one is we have Gerson, who is our Dean Dean of Student Learning. And most of you might know that Gerson was a former faculty here, and then he went to El Camino College as an associate dean. And now he's back here as one of our Dean of Student Learning. So welcome back, Gerson.
Thank you, thank you. Happy to have you.
And then we also have Dr. Maria Garcia, who is our interim Dean of Counseling and Additive Pathways. And so she started on February the fourth. And so she went through with our counselors and also our guided pathways. And so I wanted to show I recognized him at today's meeting. And we have a lot that's going on for the district, but I think we've done some really good work. As Dr. Little Richard, I think we're doing some really good work, creative, innovative thing. One of these that's on the agenda, and I give Ruben James credit publicly, is that we have the new, working with the, you know, the county by chance, from Health Department, I give him credit for getting it done. So your locals gets a credit for identifying and the recognition for identifying, just a little bit, gives credit for identifying this meeting that the county has regards to the health kiosk. And so we, on the board, to the data board, approved this new health kiosk that we, we have two, one will be located near the farmer's market.
Yes.
And the other one will be located near the, every table cafeteria, where students are able, our community members are able to receive health supplies, and it's free, and it's censored. So for example, if you get a COVID nineteen test, you can be able to get it, but when they run out, the county, the, the vendor that works for the county automatically restocks those machines. And so we've been first community council, LA County to have that. And so we're really excited about that. I want to say thank you to everyone that has been involved in that, and hopefully they're installed this week.
Yes, hopefully, they said they'll try.
Okay, so that's, that's Ruben James's job, getting stuff. So thank you very much, thank you for this, my boy.
Nineteen point zero two, trustee Thomas.
Um, I kind of have a few as well, but I just want to follow up with that, thank you both, trustee Locans and Ruben James for making that happen. And Ruben, thank you so much for everything you do for me outside of the board. Thank you for your assistance. Um, so yes, we, I went to the CCLC with some of the board members. We also. We also attended the, um, the legislative, uh, board meeting as well. Um, there's some workshops. On, um, how to address ICE here on campus, and, um, just, uh, funding and the things that, uh, Trump is doing and the percentage of rates and all those. Good things, the bad things that we are struggling with, uh, today. But our president and CEO, Dr. Keith Curry, is already on top of half of those things. Everything that they were addressing, I'm asking questions, it's already been addressed. So I want to thank you for already always being on top of things. And taking care of Compton College, Dr. Curry. Um, also, um, yeah, so, um. Every week, every week, can we also get, uh, a picture update of the housing? Awesome. Okay, now, uh, for paid internships, I know we talked about paid internship, I just wanted to bring that to the forefront. But we can kind of bring that back up to, uh, talk more about paid internships. Um, and my housing questions, I will, uh, email them to you from, get a dress set to the board. About my housing concerns and issues and things like that. Um, and if I could just say like two or three questions, just to kind of get it. At the forefront of everyone's brain. Um, some of my housing concerns and questions was. So, uh, we do have parents, right? We have, uh, um, students who are parents, and sometimes they have like two or three children, right? So when we do this, uh, housing, uh, how, how are we gonna house a, a student who has two or three children? Are we gonna put them in a room with another parent who has two or three children? Now that's kind of chaotic when it comes to studying. Um, I know that we're gonna be having, um, more campus police here on campus. I'm just trying to see how we can utilize them for the housing if. Um, at a certain time, if we can at least maybe have some badges being shown for coming on campus, where we're not having a lot of people congregating. Um, at this, at the housing, um, or whatever, or whatnot. And then also, um. You know, the measures of how we're gonna go about housing two hundred, uh, fifty students. And that, I have more, but that's just a proof of thought on where I'm going for the parents. And putting parents and different students who don't have kids, and how we're gonna make that work. Um, so yes, that was some of my, uh, concerns. So yes, that's, oh, and also just thank you for, um, every table, the students love that. I know, um, the cash for college that, uh, the financial aids held, the students did enjoy that. I had a lot of feedback. Um, some did not get it, but they still enjoyed it overall, um, just being there on campus and the free food and congregating. They said they had a great time, even though some did not win the scholarship. So that's it.
Doctor Villa.
Oh, um, I just want to also say thank you to, um, the administration that, uh. And that will do the students as they continue, you know, to work toward. Why we should all be here, like, uh, student community excellence and, um, continuing to make a change in our community. Um, I would also like to make a note that the California Community College Women's Caucus is hosted. International Women's Day on March the seventh, it's going to be held at West Dollar College, which is. A little bit away from here, uh, um, really important as we're entering into March. Uh, to be thinking about the value of all communities, which leads me to February in Black History Month. And I want to thank the campus for the various things that they've done, um, and to remember that a month a year. Can never contain the true people's contribution and community contribution, that we should recognize and that we. Um, and I just want to thank everyone. Thank you, Dr. Curry.
Um, yes, thank you. I just wanted, um, and we had a robust, we had a presentation. And, uh, robust discussion around financial aid. So I would just like, uh, again, as always, to, um, reiterate, reiterate. Um, the primary deadline, which we're approaching, that we have passed by, um, our next meeting. But also, um, just because it is a primary deadline, um, you know, all students can, you know, when you have the more touches. Um, face to face, um, getting those questions answered, understanding the different options for. Uh, that financial barrier for students. I think the more you're in front of the topic, more of a better understanding of it now. And you have a more increased opportunity of success. So I would just like to remind our students again, um, to apply early. Um, and not necessarily wait till the deadline to file. That's all I have to share. Thank you.
Trustee Lopez.
Nothing more.
And for my report, I'll just make it quick. I just, uh, I attended both conferences, the retreat. I, I thought all of them well. Uh, I want to give special things to. Dr. Curry and Heather Karna, um, they handled our, they were just very organized and prepared for our state of. Visits, I, I thought our C B O did a great job advocating for college and just like students at a federal level. In D C and then Heather Karna's like legislative report cards. I feel like they get more detailed. They have very relevant information, just like what the material we provide for our legislators, it's, it's very concise. And I, I appreciate all the hard work that goes into that. That's it for my report. Item twenty, the next regularly scheduled board meeting is March seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Procession begins at five and open session in that six. Our meeting is now adjourned at eight oh one.
Thank you. My name is Benjamin Holyfield, and my wife, she's on this board for twenty years. And I'm so pleased to be here this evening. I enjoyed the meeting so very, very much, and I just had to say that.